Hi, my name is John Krings and I would like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters and the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for giving me the opportunity to participate in this candidate forum. I'm a lifelong resident of central Wisconsin and a graduate of John Edwards High School at Port Edwards. I also attended Mid-State Tech. My wife Julie and I live in Grand Rapids and our three children are graduates of Lincoln High School. I'm employed at ND Paper in Beeren. I have served on the Board of Education for almost 16 years and currently serve as Board President. I am also a member of the Grand Rapids Lions Club and I'm a past president of the United Steelworkers Local 187. I feel that public education is one of the cornerstones of society and there is no more important function of local government than that of the education of our youth. I possess the skillset and have the time to commit to continue in this endeavor.
Thanks for having me on today, Joe. I'm Mike Deary. I'm a longtime resident of Wisconsin Rapids, having lived here since 1973. I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, and I'm even a great-grandfather. And the reason I'm running is because I'm greatly disturbed where our kids are academically in our school system. I want the very best for every one of our kids in our school and that's why I'm running for this position.
I'm Jen Farbra. Thanks for tuning in to view all the candidate interviews here. I want to introduce myself as a longtime community member. I've been here probably about 17 years. I work for Inclusa currently. I'm a community resource coordinator. That's a social work case manager type position. Prior to this, I did have a career in public education. I was a teacher for over two decades. 16 of those years were here in WRPS. I worked at the former East and West Junior High, what is now Rams, and at Lincoln High School. I taught German. My husband David and I have a blended family. We have five kids. All of the kids have gone through the local schools. Three of them have graduated already and the two youngest are still going to Lincoln. Education has been an important value of mine for my whole life. After high school, I went on to study education at UW-Whitewater. I got a bachelor's degree in education with obviously the emphasis in German. And really, in my life, I've dedicated 40 years to education, schools, and learning. I believe that as a school board candidate, I can foster good relationships. And I think that we will have a better society if we have better educated citizens. And that really is driven within our schools and at home as well. I want to be able to give teachers the tools and the things that they need to offer a wonderful education to our students right here in this community so that we can keep our kids here. And also, I think that I bring an interesting perspective, being a parent, a community member, and having been a former teacher, that I know school procedures and the methods and the ways that school work, that I will be able to bring my knowledge in that to help make WRPS a better place to learn and to work.
My name is Chris Inda and I'm candidate for school board. So after graduating from the Adams Friendship Area, I decided to go directly into the Army and spent the next four years serving the country here and abroad. And then upon completing my tour, I decided to come back home and actually attended Mid-State Technical College, looking for an associate's degree. And then more recently than I've spent the past six years here as a real estate agent in the Wisconsin Rapids area. And then my wife and I live here in Wisconsin Rapids. We have two children and they're both starting to come into the school career. I've got a 4K and a first grade. And that's really what started my passion for the school board, wanting to be involved in not only obviously their upbringing, but to help support every community member, maybe who doesn't have a voice, and support as many children as possible. So I want to be that voice for our kids to succeed.
My name is Kathy Stevensenz and I'm running to be a member of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School Board. Thank you to Wisconsin Rapids Community Media and to Joe for giving us this opportunity to share a little bit about ourselves today and share a little bit about why we're running for school board. We appreciate that. Just to give you a little bit of background about my experience with the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District, my experiences there are many and varied. And I suppose the most important experience I've had with the school district is that my three children attended Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools from the time they were in kindergarten to the time they graduated from Lincoln High School. They received a wonderful education. They are very successful and that's not to say as they were going through those 13 years of schooling that there weren't sometimes challenges. But overall, it was a great, great district to go to school and I'm very proud of the experience they had and grateful to the teachers and the administrators and the other staff that supported them through their time there. I also gave my career to Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. I graduated in 1984 from college and was hired by Lincoln High School as a social studies teacher. I taught there for several years. Then I went on to become the principal of East Junior High School. I served as principal of River Cities High School. I also served as the assistant and the director of curriculum and instruction for several years. Spent 35 years with the district and retired from the district in 2020. Just a little bit more about myself, my husband, we've been married for 35 years. He also was a teacher in the district. He retired in 2015. And we feel very strongly about this community in Wisconsin Rapids. We both moved here in 1985 and we love it here. We're very proud of the community. We're very proud of the district. And it's important to us that we give back to the community. A few other things about myself, I do, as I said, have a bachelor's in education. I do have a law degree and I also just recently received my PhD from the University of Wisconsin Madison in educational leadership and policy analysis. So I believe my experience and background and education gives me the skills I need to effectively serve and represent the taxpayers on the school board. Why do I want to be a school board member? Because I am passionate about every student receiving the best education possible, which is what's stated in the mission statement of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. And after taking a three-year break after retiring, I feel like I'm ready to jump back in and support the district as a board member and represent the taxpayers in the community so that we can continue to provide that. I want all children to receive the wonderful experience that my children received and I think I can effectively do that as a board member working for you. I believe the biggest challenge that Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools is facing, and I believe this is the biggest challenge for public schools all over the state of Wisconsin, is balancing what's in our mission statement, providing the best education for every student, with the budget constraints we operate under and making sure that we're responsive to the community and to the taxpayer in keeping our budget sound. We want to provide the best education. That is critical. And when we say that, we're talking every child. So if you're thinking about every child, there are so many things we need to offer. We need to make sure that student that wants to go to MIT or Columbia has the education, the rigorous education that they need. We need to provide the technological education for that student who wants to go on and be a welder or be a chef. We need to provide for students who come to us with impoverished backgrounds, who don't get a hot meal the night before, or who are coming from trauma. We need to be able to support those students. We need to provide co-curriculars. So if a student has incredible musical or artistic or athletic ability, that they can go on in those areas and excel, or just have a great experience at the high school level. We need to provide for our students with disabilities who have special needs and need the support so they can go on and be successful in contributing to our community. And we need to do that in a time where inflation is running rampant. It's more expensive for you to pay your bills, well, it's more expensive for the school district to pay their bills as well. Their light and electric bills and gas bills have gone up, their food bills have gone up. We have teacher shortages right now and we need to, within these budget constraints, find the absolute best teachers and staff so that our students do get the best education possible. That's absolutely critical. And we need to continue to support all those student needs. So that balance is just a tremendously difficult challenge. So what do I propose as solutions? Well, I think it really starts with leadership and I think we really need to think about the leaders that we hire and make sure we're hiring effective leaders who can lead our district, who understand the budget, who understand the laws and the statutes and the policies, and can make wonderful decisions so that they can provide to meet all these student needs. Let me just give you an example, and I think Wisconsin Rapids has done that very effectively. The Lincoln High School pool was getting to the point where we couldn't have students swim in the pool anymore. We couldn't hold meets there. It just was too dated. But it was millions of dollars to renovate the pool so that it was effective. Well, our smart leaders who are committed to this community came up with some budgeting solutions by paying down debt more quickly than they had to so that they could, without going to the community through referendum, they could fix that pool. And it's those kinds of solutions that we need. We also need good leaders in the district who know when it is time to go to the community, but that can't be every year. But the community supported the district in a wonderful fashion in this past referendum and that came through strong leaders educating the district and helping the district or the community, and helping the community understand why the district needed those funds to do the projects that are now occurring in every school to keep students safe so that there are safe entryways for every student, and many other renovations that needed to take place. So I think that leadership is key. I think there's other things we can do as well. For example, energy efficiencies, which I believe the district has been doing a very effective job at, but we need to continue to look at that and see ways our maintenance department is wonderful and how they can continue to approach that. Community partnerships, that's absolutely critical. How can we share services so that we're not duplicating services and we can save money by sharing services? Looking at grant dollars, grant dollars are always a way to bring in revenue. So those creative solutions in a very inflexible budget are critical to meeting the needs of all students. But I do think that starts with strong leadership and we need our leaders to be a part of the community. And I'm so grateful that we have that in the district and we need to continue to support that. And we need to look for leaders who are going to stay. If you look at districts around the state, there are several where superintendents come and go. I believe the average life of a superintendent is three years in a district. Well, those are the districts that are going to referendum every year and can't or struggle to balance their budgets and to do the things that need to be done to keep the quality of education high for students. Along with that, I just want to say, some might argue that the biggest issue facing our district is test scores. And I'm going to say that test scores aren't the biggest issue facing Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. Test scores go up, test scores go down. We need to do everything we can and we need to continue to do everything we can to be sure test scores remain high. But the school district of Wisconsin Rapids, since 2010, when state report cards, which are report cards which grade the districts, if you will, the state actually grades the districts, Wisconsin Rapids Schools has never not met expectations on our report cards. We have always met expectations and that's based primarily on test scores. And in fact, last year, the school district of Wisconsin Rapids, seven of the 10 schools, those schools exceeded expectations on state report cards. So I think we need to be proud of our district. We need to celebrate the good things that happen in our district. And for a community of our size and for some of the economic difficulties we've faced with mill closure and other things as a district, the district's done a very good job of providing state-of-the-art, strong schools for every child in meeting that need. And we need to continue to do that.
An effective school board member needs to have an open dialogue with the community, teachers, and the administration. We need to collaborate, build that strong relationship to inform and engage, understand what our similarities are, what our differences is, so that we can build upon that and have that same vision and outlook for our kids. I believe in empowering our teachers and the parents to give them that voice. You know, I think one of the difficulties I see in the community, I hear from parents, is not being heard and from teachers alike, the struggles they face in the classroom, and giving them the opportunity to hear them and work to make the whole education system better for our kids. So building that trust within the community, getting some community involvement as well. It takes a village to raise a child and I want to bring all parties together. And then the other thing is, as far as the school board specifically, we need to have measurable goals and vision. We need to be held accountable for those as well. So having some type of mission statement that we can build upon and measure our success.
Education has changed a lot since I was in school and since I started my career in education. And we can definitely say that COVID-19 changed it in ways that we couldn't have really anticipated. So as we're emerging from the challenges of teaching and learning in COVID, we have a lot to really try to focus on and prepare students for this kind of new educational experience. And where teachers are getting students that learn differently and have learned differently because of what COVID really forced schools into doing. So far, I know that the district has spent part of their SIR $3 in hiring more faculty and staff to implement interventions, to help increase student achievement. There was some time lost, there was some curriculum ground that didn't get covered, and there's a little bit of makeup that needs to happen. So that federal funding was used to hire some teachers and staff, other staff aides, for example, would be another category that the money went towards. But that's temporary money. And after that money runs out, I want to make sure that the district has a really good plan on how to move forward. And it has to bring in all the stakeholders. We need to get feedback from teachers. What do they need? What is happening in those classrooms that is different from pre-COVID times? And what different resources might they need? So it really takes a lot of listening, a lot of coming together, people looking at all the options that are on the table, and all the considerations that we'll have to look at the budget. That's a huge consideration. And again, engaging all of the parties to give feedback.
Well, I think the major issue we're facing is where our academic levels are in our schools right now. And folks can go to my Facebook website and see the data. I can't get into all that right here because there's just too much, but for a 10-year period, we've seen a great decline in our academic programs in our schools. The Department of Public Instruction just shows us how bad things are. And the data that I use comes all from those sources. So what I would plan to do about that, we need to have a five-year vision where we're going with the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. We need to utilize the data that the state provides and make changes that will address the problems we're facing in our school. For too long, this data has been ignored and left just laying there and not done anything with it. So we need to use this yardstick to measure how successful we are with our children in the school.
I feel that a major challenge currently facing our district is the uncertain funding provided by the state. It's extremely difficult to plan a budget when you're unsure of what funding levels will be. Although locally, we don't have a lot of control over that, so we must maintain some flexibility in our budgets. We also live in a community that has recently undergone the shutdown of a major employer. This has caused more uncertainty and poverty than we were accustomed to in the past. I don't feel as a board member we have any control over that, however, we do have to be cognizant of what's going on in our community. We've also come out of almost two years of dealing with a worldwide pandemic. Our test scores have dropped, as most schools across the state and nation have. We are dealing with it the best we can. We've dedicated more staff to helping students get caught up. I guess any organization needs to be looking at where they can improve and our organization is no different. I feel the board has done a good job working under these difficult circumstances, though there's more work to do and we continue to look for ways to get better.
Reading material, again, we need to certainly be aware of what's being assigned and what's available to our children. Needs to be something, again, going back to having that open dialogue with everybody and understanding from all points of view what everybody wants for our kid, what's going to be best for the curriculum. The focus of a school is educating our children through curriculum-based approach. And we need to look through that lens and make sure that we're providing that type of materials for our children. But again, talking to the parents, talking to the teachers, what do they want? We're put in this position to provide that voice for our community, to present the best materials for our children.
Any concern that a parent would bring to me would have to be, first and foremost, no matter what the topic is, just something that I listen to very carefully. I have dealt with parents in the past that have concerns about school when I was a teacher, but also as a community member, I listen, some of my friends are parents and I hear those things. Listening first and understanding the concern or the problem is the best way to start. Then I think really getting to the root of what is that concern, what does that parent want to happen with that concern? So just really asking questions and getting as much information as possible. My goal when dealing with things like this would be to have a really informed discussion with them. That means that sometimes we can't finish the discussion all in one day, or one phone call, or one meeting. So I would have to do research, maybe. I might have to read the material that they would be voicing a concern about, or talk to administrators, talk to educators, and learn how is that material being used and why it's being used. And then there's a conversation that keeps flowing between, it would be between myself and the parent, for example, of, well, this is what I have learned. And then we have a back and forth discussion. I have good faith in our teachers. I know they are working really hard to pick curriculum materials that meet state standards, that provide lots of skills, or that they can use as springboards to teach students skills in the classroom. But curriculum's always changing, student needs are changing, society's always changing. So looking at these things doesn't hurt, but we do have to have healthy conversations about it and just be informed. I think that is one big goal of mine, is that we're all working together to get all the facts and understand each other.
Well, I think all the materials that were given to our children in the schools, or whatever grade level they are, that the parents ought to be able to fully see just exactly what's being taught to their children. And if they can do it, put it online, and if they can't make a setting available where parents and community members can come in and check and see just what exactly is being taught to our kids.
During my time on the board, I have not been contacted by any parents with concerns about the curriculum being used in our district. All the curriculum is available online for review. We also hold open house opportunities prior to purchase of curriculum for any member of the public to inspect potential purchases. If a parent had a concern, I would direct them to discuss their concerns with the appropriate member of the administrative team.
I think we need to educate parents on the ways they can get involved in selecting reading materials and asking questions about reading materials. The board has several policies which outline how parents can get involved. So for example, when materials are selected for a particular content area, there are several ways that parents and community members as well can get involved. Initially, there's usually a survey done of parents regarding how they like the content and how it's being taught in that area. Once the materials are selected, before the board even sees those materials, they're put on display for the community to come in and give feedback on. All of that feedback goes to the board. Before the board says yea or nay to those materials, there is a committee, it's a curriculum committee, which looks at the materials and reviews them before they go to the board. And that particular committee has community members on it. So I think we need to educate our parents about that process. In addition to that process, once materials are in place, if a community member or a parent isn't happy with a particular piece of reading, or unit, or whatever it might be that their child is involved in, they certainly can go to their child's teacher, go to their child's principal, they can ask to see the curriculum, they can ask to see the materials, and they can say, I don't want my child to be involved in that particular book, or read that book. And an alternate reading will be given to the child. The district isn't going to force a child to read something that the parent is uncomfortable with. And finally, if someone feels that there's material that is educationally unsuitable for students, there's also a board policy where they can challenge that material. And a committee is formed primarily made up of community people, it's board policy, who's on that committee, and they review the material to see if it is, in fact, educationally suitable and make a decision. And if the parent isn't happy with the outcome, they can appeal that to the board. So I really believe on this topic, it's helping parents understand that they do have a voice and where they can utilize that voice in the processes that are set out by board policy.
I certainly would support citizenship education to our students, whether it's statutory requirement or not. At Lincoln High School, 11th graders are required to take a social studies class to learn a lot about civics. They have constitutional law is one of the classes, American government, there's an advanced placement course as well on government and politics. And those citizenship types of points would probably fit really well into that. That's also when they're preparing for their Wisconsin civics exam. So I would absolutely support adding that in.
Well, absolutely. I believe that we need to teach the principles our founding fathers set forth in putting this nation together. I believe especially in the high school level that we should teach citizens skills to keep our republic strong for the next generation.
Absolutely, I support that. How can we expect our children, graduating children, our young adults, to play an integral part of our society without those skills? Without teaching those skills, I think we're failing our children, putting them behind. I'm open to curriculum to provide each children with those life skills necessary to not only participate in society, but make it better as well. We want to see everyone succeed, whether it is citizenship skills, or maybe understanding how to budget your own life. Some of those blue collar types of skills are certainly necessary and I would certainly support that.
Not only do I support it, I celebrate it. And the great news is that in Wisconsin Rapids Public School, no student can graduate from high school without completing a credit in government, which teaches those skills. So that's great news. We already have that. Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools has that in their district curriculum. And not only that government requirement at the high school, but it's infused into other areas in the social studies curriculum as well. For example, at eighth grade, in American Studies, at fifth grade, in American History, students are taught about citizenship, about voting, and those very important critical skills. And I challenge you during a big election year to find a classroom where even if it's not like a social studies class, teachers aren't doing something with kids about voting and about elections. It's just a really critical part of what we do. I mean, citizenship is one of the reasons we have public education. And I think the Rapids does a good job with that. If people have concerns, we can continue to talk about how to do it better. And as a board member, I'd always listen to those thoughts.
Our district does have a civics requirement for high school graduation. This material is provided through multiple class offerings and has been in place for a number of years. So in answer to the question, we are already doing this.
Well, I believe on the voice that we need to turn things around in our schools. I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get to work with our student staff and the community to make Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, once again, a source of excellence in education. We need to build tomorrow's leaders today and I'm hardworking, I'm goal and data oriented to achieve positive results. I want to thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts and vision for our schools. Thank you for your vote on February 21st. Please check out my Facebook page for more information. And lastly, I have a meet and greet set up at McMillan Library this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 and I hope some of you can attend. Again, thank you for having me and remember to vote for me on February 21st.
So I believe I am the best candidate. I'm certainly committed to a high expectation for our students and their achievement. As a US Army veteran, I understand there's a chain of command in play here and school board is one that sets the vision for the whole school district and giving each member of that chain of command the tools they need to succeed and understanding where the weaknesses may be to strengthen those. I was required to work with many different types of individuals while I served, understanding their different backgrounds and where our strengths were together. So working with all of our board members, all of our community members, our parents or teachers, that's something I'm certainly well-versed in. Furthermore, as a realtor, using those skills now to meet specific needs and challenges, discussing different terms needed or issues that come up during somebody's sale of a house. So using those similar skills towards the school board and addressing those needs and collaborating with others. Finding those common ground between us, understanding the shared values we have on how to raise our kids. We all have a strong belief on doing the best for our kids. We need to spend less time focused on operational issues and more on the policies to improve student achievement.
Coming to the Wisconsin Rapids School Board, I would be able to bring my experience of working with parents and working with students. I'm an active community member and I really have a collaborative work approach. It's been how I have had my professional career, both as a teacher and now working as a community resource coordinator. My passion for education runs deep. It's been a longtime, important part of my life and I believe that I can put our students first and help our community work together to provide great education for our kids. I would hope you'll make a plan to vote and you can find me on Facebook if you would like to know more about my particular candidacy. Thanks.
I feel I bring the necessary skills and experience to the position. I'm open-minded and thorough in my decision-making. I take into account the expertise and experience of others. The position of school board member is nonpartisan for a reason. Politics should never come into play in regards to public school education. Every child deserves the very best educational opportunities that we can provide regardless of their background. If reelected, I vow to continue to do my very best to ensure that all students are given the opportunity to learn and grow into productive members of society while still being good steward of local tax dollars. In closing, I would like to encourage anyone watching this to be sure to get out and vote in the primary election on Tuesday, February 21st. And once again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for hosting this candidate forum.
I hope voters will elect me because they recognize my passion and my desire to help every student in the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools be successful. And also to represent the taxpayers and do what is necessary to represent the community. My background and experience includes an understanding of what it takes to be an effective school board member. I work closely with the board in my capacity as the director of instruction, so my learning curve won't be great coming on the school board and I think I can hit the ground running. I'm familiar with board policies and procedures and I also understand state and federal statutes which dictate how school districts should run. Finally, I just want to say that if you happen to talk to any of the students I taught, any of the students I was principal for, or any of the staff I worked with, I think they'd tell you that I truly, I mean, it's easy for me to say here, that I truly believe in providing the best education for every student and doing so in a fiscally responsible way. I think they would tell you that that is true and you don't just have to hear it from me, you could ask them. It's been a privilege to serve the district in the past and it would be a privilege and honor to continue to do so as a school board member for Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. Thank you for this opportunity again and please vote on February 21st for Kathy Stevensen.